Thursday, July tenth, this meeting the Rome City Council on coming to order. We have a forum of council members. At this time, I'd like to offer the invitation. Fathers, thank you for this day and for this chance to govern ourselves, lead, guide, and direct us to do what's good in your sight, Father. And also, we'd like to lift up those poor people in South Texas who've lost their loved ones. Keep them in our prayers, Father, in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which has passed one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas side, I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, a state under God, one and indivisible.
Now.
I had to do that for a party.
It's been one of these days. All right, thank you, folks. At this time, do we have any public comments?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Moving on for announcements. I don't think there was anybody have any announcements they'd like to make. Let's move on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
No questions yet, sir. Am I working?
No.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
These are an office.
Oh. They're not working?
Aye.
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 All right, motion carries. Thank you. Sorry about the microphones.
No.
I think we're not on. There we go. Now we're back on. Consent agenda has passed unanimously. Thank you. All right, moving on to the monthly staff reports. Do we have any staff reports tonight?
No, sir, we don't.
Good. All right, going on to the regular agenda for our primary discussion tonight will be the preliminary budget for 2025-26.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Don't mean to jump in front of you, but we do have some information to cover this evening. I apologize if we're having some technical difficulties. We're trying to post an update to the access code and the password so that people can dial in if they want to hear the meeting. Otherwise, it will be posted hopefully tomorrow by mid-afternoon so that people can come back in and watch this because I know we do have interested individuals who'd like to take a look at what City Council's doing. In front of all of you this evening, you do have a couple of documents. One you will see is a PowerPoint presentation, and the other one is the base budget that is required by the state law and by statute by our ordinances that we file at least thirty days prior to adopting the budget establishing a tax rate. So this base budget will be the starting point for said discussions and will meet those requirements as we have used for the past several years. But what I'd like to do is direct you to pull out your PowerPoint presentation and to follow along as we go through this. I do have all of our staff department head members here with us for the most support. If you have questions, we're happy to answer any of those questions, but if you will join me on slide number two. This is the same format that I have used with council for the last couple of years that I think gives a very good overview of where we stand within our two major funds that we have that govern the finances of the city of Rome. You will see on slide two, we're going to start out talking about certified values again. You'll see in the history on the far left, FY twenty-one, twenty-two, our tax base itself was about a hundred and eighty-three million dollars. You will see that the latest information on the far right that I received from the appraisal district is about two-hundred-and-sixty-seven million dollars. So we've had about a forty-five percent increase in the tax base over the past five years. Now, interestingly enough, you may think, that's an excellent number, and that's really good growth, and we're very happy for that, and we are very. Diversification and change in the tax base is very important for us to maintain a robust and a healthy revenue stream as it relates to ad valorem because we want to make sure that we can provide the services that the city needs. However, as your tax base grows, it also has an inverse relationship to your tax rate. So as the base grows, your rate goes down. You will see as we go through some of these slides throughout this presentation that we have continually adopted the no new revenue rate, which has kept us at about a half a million dollars a year for operations from this revenue source, which is why we struggle to put two officers on the street at one time and to be able to fund some of those positions that we need for events, things like that, that the community would like to see. But just be mindful that we do want to see that growth in the tax base because it is beneficial to our residents and it is healthy for the city of Rome, but we also have to pay attention to the rate that's applied to that base so that we have the sufficient funds that we need to provide the services that council has directed. Any questions on that tax base piece? All right, if you'll go to slide deck number three, you will also see that I have shown the tax base in a little bit different format that is in the millions. This chart goes back to FY eighteen, nineteen, and just shows it in a more colorful form. You will see that in twenty-three, twenty-four, we had a slightly higher tax base itself. There was some sort of mineral valuation change in that year, and then in twenty-four, twenty-five, there was a downgrading of said minerals. And so it took money away from the tax base that we were expecting to have. Again, it's not really been terribly impactful on our revenue stream, but it is something that we continue to watch, especially for any giant fluctuations. When you go to your next slide, excuse me, and you look at your tax rate history for the last twenty years, this is one that I put together in the first budget that I presented to council. So that's actually on slide four. And you will see what I mean about the tax rate. In the twenty, early two thousands, the tax rate was set at sixty-three, point six-three-eight-five-zero-zero per hundred-dollar valuation, and it stayed there a couple of years. Then in about twenty, two thousand and four, two thousand and five, it dropped down a little bit, about point five-five per hundred-dollar valuation, and stayed there for several years all the way through to about twenty-seventeen. Then there was a change in approach or need, and you'll see that the tax rate, by adopting that no new revenue rate, went down about twenty cents as far as in twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-four, and then it went back up to point six-one-eight-seven-six-seven for the twenty-twenty-five year, and that is based on the debt that we just issued. You will recall that the utility fund does not have the capacity to sustain the million and a half dollars that we pay in debt on the bonds that we just issued. So it is coming and is backed by the property tax base. So that's why you see that change in that fluctuation here. Any questions on this slide? Okay. When you look again at the tax rate history for the last five years, this is just another view to show this in more of a chart format and less of a linear graph. It does show you the information since twenty-twenty and coming forward, and you can see how we've had some of those drops and rises based on the information I've given you. If you'll look at slide deck number six, this talks about the main fund types, and just to refresh your memory, this is something that we discussed since we are very fortunate that council from our last budget retreat is the council that we still have today. You may recognize this from our budget conversations in the last calendar year. General fund is your main checking account for the municipality. Anything that comes into administration, which would be fines and fees from your courts, it would be any police revenue from impounds, from drug seizures, from the RVR, private partnerships we have with them, the building and development, so your building permits, your inspection fees, all roll up under your general fund in that particular category. You also have a hotel motel tax fund, which is a separate revenue stream that we receive from the Motel Six that's out on the highway. You'll recall that we use some of that to drive tourism through our Easter event and through our Christmas event. We have the Rome Beautification Fund, which has a little less than two thousand dollars in it that was set several years ago to help beautify the community. We've not really done anything with that fund yet, but we do have the money available if council should make some move in that direction at some point. Then we have grant funds based on various things that the police department, the fire department may apply for, public works may apply for based on CDBG grants, community development block grants, and other things in order to help regenerate the community. You'll see on the right, there's a court security technology. Those are restricted funds. The court has three or four restricted funds that for each citation that's issued, the taxes themselves generate a certain amount of income, but the certain portions of those citations are restricted for certain uses. For instance, the technology, Kristi Adams uses that to pay for things like her court software and credit card payments and things of that nature, and it can only be used for that purpose. Same thing on the technology and the security can, she purchased this metal detector walkthrough for the court to help enhance security there. We also have the fire department in its own fund, and we have the Parks and Rec Department in its own fund. Now, the other big one that mirrors a lot of what we do in general fund is what we call utility fund, which is where we book your water and sewer and your trash revenue. So this basically just gives you an overview of the different, to the mayor's point, the different pots of money that come in on behalf of the city. For each one, there are certain restrictions as to how we can use it and methodologies from which we can expend, and all of your budget will encompass all of these funds. Any questions on this slide? Okay, so then moving to slide number. Your assumptions remain the same as the previous year. When you get to the line item portion of the base budget, it does not include any changes in payroll, any changes in insurance, because we won't have those for several more months, or any service delivery expansion that we will talk about as part of our budget process today. If council makes a decision to increase the service delivery, I did not include it in the base budget. The base budget is meant to continue the exact same services we have today into the next fiscal year with no change. The property tax rate information will be provided by the county. We generally get that end of July, first part of August. We'll present that to the city council at that time. We do have access to a, the same software that they use so that we can kind of manipulate the numbers and make sure that we are tracking and understanding exactly how the county's calculating that. So if council had any questions, I can hopefully answer those for you. There is also no use of fund balance. You will recall that we passed a fund balance policy that we would maintain a minimum of a hundred and eighty days of operating cash and reserve. We are in excess of that, and at current, we don't anticipate using any of those reserve funds for any project at this time. That may change as the budget goes along, but we will wait and see. As I mentioned, the fund balance for general fund is in excess of your financial policy, and there are no capital improvements or infrastructure in your base budget numbers. Those are going to be contained within your bond funds because at current, we do not have enough reserves from which to fund those type of projects with cash. Does that make sense? Okay. So next, we're going to go to the general fund overview. If you will look at slide number nine, these are your revenue numbers for all of those sources that I mentioned to you other than utility fund, et cetera, that roll up into your general fund revenue. For the FY twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-four, twenty-five, those are budgeted numbers, not audited numbers. All of the rest of them from twenty-three back to the left, fifteen, sixteen, was pulled from each of the audits that we've had done by our outside auditing firm. This will include sales and use tax, property tax, fines and fees from the municipal courts, anything we get from inspections, if we have those private partnerships with RVR, et cetera, all shown here in one general fund, fund, if you will. If you will look at slide number ten, this is breaking out your property tax revenue, which is basically the, as I mentioned, the tax rate that's applied to your tax base. And we talked about how it had been maintained at about the fifty-five cent, and then it went down to thirty-three, and now it's back up to sixty-one for the debt. So this is where we receive the funds in the general revenue account that relate to property tax or what is actually called ad valorem tax on each home, business, et cetera, within the city of Rome. You will see that there was a significant change in twenty-four, twenty-five. Again, I will bring that back to you, that this has to do with the debt rate, to a great extent, with the bond proceeds and, excuse me. The coming fiscal year, the debt may be slightly higher in the twenty-five, twenty-six because I need to get the debt service numbers from Hilltop Security so I can plug those into our coming budget, but this gives you at least a historical look at how those numbers have changed over the past approximately ten years. Any questions on this slide? When you look at slide number nine, this is property tax for operations only. You may recall that your property tax is made up of.
Eleven.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, eleven. I'm so sorry. I misnumbered that. When you look at eleven, this is for your operational component only. You will see in the subset of the chart up in the corner, you have a green line, which is your total tax rate. You have a red line, which is your, excuse me, you have a red line, which is your debt, and the blue line is your operations. You will see that the green and the red fluctuate based on that debt rate. However, the operations line has stayed fairly stagnant for the past several years. The only revenue source that we have to offset this bucket of money, as the mayor says, is through sales and use tax or some other development agreement that we may enter into with someone new coming into the city. So you will see that this has kind of stayed fairly consistent in the past several years. Any questions on this?
So the big round figure of five hundred thousand is an estimate?
Yes, sir, it is for, this year, I don't have all the numbers in, and based on our preliminary conversations today, I will base twenty-five, twenty-six on what direction I receive and then bring that to you at your next meeting.
Can we go back to slide nine for just a second? I just have a question about the general fund revenue here and then the base budget general fund on the other paperwork that you gave us. Because it says the total revenue is three point oh-six-nine for twenty-four, twenty-five, but this is three point eight, and so I didn't know what the difference was.
Oh, I see what you're saying. I think I may need to go back and check those numbers.
Okay.
Well, keep in mind, this is, this is simply administration. You have to roll up the police departments, the.
That's what I, that's what I was wondering. Is it everything or?
This is by department. This is all of the numbers. So when you factor in the revenue that the court generates, the police department has with RVR, the development code, et cetera, that's how you get to your.
Okay, got it.
Yeah, so sorry, you were looking at this page here. Yeah. Okay. So, any questions on general fund? This is pretty basic from the standpoint of the numbers that we have this year from last year. Really, the meat and potatoes of this conversation will come a little bit later when we get into the departmental priorities and the things that we have discussed with the mayor. Just trying to give you a baseline of the numbers to indicate that at current, I don't have any change in the base budget itself. Now, that's adopted for twenty-five, twenty-six, I expect to look very different from what we are discussing here initially today because at current, I only, I need direction from council. The mayor and I have discussed priorities, which we'll get into here a little bit longer and a little bit more in this discussion, but we need votes, we need direction from council on which way to pursue. But we can always come back to these. Utility fund is the next view. You will see on slide number thirteen, I pulled the information out of the slide deck that we had used before when we were talking about the water and sewer rates as well as the capital improvement program. The far right-hand side is for the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year. Two-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand is what we expect to be in excess in the current budget year that we're in, and then it goes back from now until twenty-twenty-three. You will see that we've had an equal smattering of red and black, and this is simply revenue over expenditures. This does not factor in depreciation. Questions on this slide? Now, when you go to the next slide on fourteen, I want you to kind of hold this loosely because this is the fund's performance when you factor in depreciation of our assets. This is one of the things that gives us some pause because, as Mr. Dominguez will tell you, this is depreciation, but it also doesn't deal with. Depreciation, but it doesn't show deferred maintenance, and we have several systems. We have water tubes, et cetera, that have had maintenance in ten, fifteen years that we are going to have to deal with. So be mindful of this slide, but let's not hold on to it just real tight because there are some ways that we can address this with the depreciation that it's simply for an, you know, illustration so that you get an idea of the challenges that utility fund has faced over the past several. When you look at the next slide on number fifteen, this is the actual revenues versus expenditures. No depreciation, no deferred maintenance. This is just what did the fund generate and what did it expend? And you will see that it looks a little better than the slide before. However, I do think that council has heard enough conversations with staff and with Mr. Dominguez to know that there are several projects that the utility fund needs to tackle. There are several things that we still need to deal. There are several things that we still need to deal with that is going to change some of these numbers. I currently show approximately nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars in fund balance for utility fund. So there's a little bit of cushion there, but we also want to maintain operating days and reserve in utility fund, much like we do in general fund. Okay. If you look at the next slide, I, this is a new one that we wanted to show you that talks about actual expenditures in the utility fund. When you look on slide sixteen, you will see that from twenty fourteen to about twenty twenty-one, we maintained approximately the same level of spending. So there was no real investment going back into the system itself. But you will see in the past three years, we've made some strides in that particular area. You see an upward trend where we are reinvesting in the systems themselves. We are reinvesting in some of the equipment that we have. So you have seen a higher expenditure level that has gone out from utility fund. Any questions on that? Okay, so this is where we kind of get to some of the more granular discussions. And based on the feedback that I received from council today, I will continue to work on the twenty-five, twenty-six budget and build that. And we will talk about this at many, many more of your meetings, if not every one of them, until the tax rate and the budget is passed. We need to do that no later than the first meeting in September. Okay. When you look at slide eighteen, mayor, do you want to explain the conversations that we've had or do you want me to do that?
Well, I could, I would like your comments too, but my priorities were for infrastructure, the facilities, which is real property, and then our, and then our people. That was one of the three priorities we, I set out last year. So the general, what I would like to see us tackle this coming year is we got to do something with the old school and this community center. We'd like to use this community center as a multipurpose facility for not only the community to use, but we can use it as an emergency operations center, which we do not have. In case, you know, we got a major freeway coming through here. We ever needed, this would be a great place for it and the community can use it. Could we just, we could get this place renovated? The old senior building, what, how many days we got left on that in the sixty days?
Well, this has been, there's been a pause in that, mayor, because I had to verify from the attorney how we put that for auction because it was real property, not personal property, and so I finally have a direction from them.
Okay, because as soon as we can, we either got to sell it or get rid of it. That's just the bottom line of it. If somebody wants to buy it, great. If they don't, it needs to go. It's, it's just, it's just, it's just a vacant building sitting there. Same with the old school. We either got to do something with it or it's going to have to go. I mean, that's going to be up to the voters. Let them tell us what they want to do with it. The code enforcement, I think this is something near and dear to everybody's heart that I've been hearing from the people out there on the streets. Uh, we, and I think everybody here wants to make Rome, we got to be able to enforce our codes and our ordinances. And we can't, you know, have no teeth in it. I think, uh, Amanda has a great idea to, to address this issue. I don't know if she's going to get into that. Does any change, I'll let you touch on that one. We have some other issues we need to keep up to date with public safety for our fire department and our police department. But again, our infrastructure, we got to have, I want to get our water. I like this to not be such tied to what Walnut Creek does. Remember last week when they cut us off? Uh, we have some answers for that. We have some projects we want to put to you to try to alleviate that. So Rome can be secure and have clean water at reasonable rates and, and supplies that are dependable. And we got to do that. We've neglected our infrastructure for, for years and I know we're working on it. So this will be another chance to do just that. Park enhancements, that's another one. People have come to me wanting shade over the playground, you know, some of those things like that. If we can get some grants for that, great. But those are some of the budget priorities that I see. Me, number one, is our infrastructure. And we got to be able to have public works that's, that can, that has what it needs to do what it needs to do. Because public works, police and fire are critical. If we can do those right, we have those funded, then we can start looking at all the nice to do stuff. Makes things really nice for the people in town. So that's kind of where I'm going with this. So I'll let you go ahead and touch on your portion.
So one of the things in, based on some direction I received from council in the past twelve months is I will be bringing forward this idea of changing the zoning at the old city hall. Right now, that's apparently zoned. It's, it's not, it's, it's zoned a category we don't seem to actually have. So our planner was trying to run the traps on that to direct me because I've had some people approach me about potentially leasing it out for a coffee shop or a sandwich shop or something of those, along those lines. And I know it's very important to the community. So it would be interesting to see if council would be interested in leasing it where we would still maintain ownership, but the community could have some benefit and we would also basically be able to kind of make sure that that history is maintained, if you will. So we, we don't sell it to someone who might tear it down or do something else, but we maintain the history, but we still have some use that's a benefit to Rome.
Isn't it, isn't it recorded as a historical building?
I, I think there's a marker there. There's a marker there for it that was there at one point.
Tried to make it into a, we had to make it into an entertainment district or something a while back. Other stuff along that road is, is on commercial residential, retail residential is it, is kind of, is really confusing. So if we can get the zonings squared away on two eighty-seven business, that's kind of where I think everybody mentioned we wanted to kind of develop that part is for business, for commercial retail. And maybe some restaurants.
So that's one of the things that I'm looking at, but it's going to take a little more work than I expected to get with the city planner and figure out how did it get to the current zoning and how do we get it out of that zoning so that we can make sure that it is zoned properly so somebody can use it for that type of, uh, business?
Yeah, if it's zoned something that we don't even have, then is that even a proper zone?
It shouldn't be some government use because it was the old city hall, but I, I apologize. I, I don't recall the category he stated, but he said, I don't find this in your zoning table. So we've got to fix that.
There's a lot of property we need to get the zoning fixed on it. So we've been, you know, we've been taking a bite of that elephant a little bit at a time, so.
And that, that's pretty customary. I mean, we, we address that as it comes up because to do it holistically would be, uh, it would be counterproductive. You don't know what the future use of that property is going to be and it would cost a lot of funds that might not be able to have been expended. So you really just do it incrementally. Um, when you look, I'm sorry.
So as we talk about each one of these in the interest of action, right? Yes, we want to hear about all of them, but what are you needing from each one? Just direction?
I will get to all of that.
Is that what you're going, direction on each one?
So I pretty much have direction on the EOC and the senior center. I understand what we're doing there. The code enforcement options I will share with you as part of this discussion. The zoning change I'm just bringing to your attention and that's one of those priorities that we identified that I will also bring through P and Z into you all. The public safety coverage will be part of this conversation. The dispatch issues for fire and EMS. Uh, this is a, a little bit of a hiccup when we went to dispatch for police with the city of Decatur. Our fire still remains with the county and we are having a tremendous amount of issues with dispatching for the fireside. So we'll have to see what alternatives exist for them, if any, or if this is just simply working with the, with Eric and his team to get a better service integration for fire. And that's just one of those things we're going to deal with. Traffic, traffic enforcement options are something that I've spoken to Chief Bocanelli about and we'll talk about that this evening. And then the park enhancements, as the mayor identified, there are, um, we have a lot of people who use our park and we want to make sure that we are reinvesting in that because that is very important to some of our community members and they do use it. So that would be a good, uh, place. Does that make sense? Yeah. So then getting a little more granular, Mrs. King, to that conversation, I also talked, so this is kind of the thirty thousand foot level that the mayor and I discussed, uh, week before last. And then as you drill down into the departments, you will recall that in the last fiscal year, you all approved a sergeant position. And then we had a change in leadership at the police department. So we waited to actually fund that position until we had a new chief onboard to make sure that was a necessity. And he does feel like that that is very important to the operations as well. So that would be something that we would want to see about funding or he's requesting.
Is there just one sergeant? Actually, no, there's two sergeants.
One patrol, one CID.
Okay.
There's also a request that, that he and I have talked about to put together for a traffic officer that would be dedicated to nothing but traffic enforcement. We have generally talked about this, but not come to any final conclusion. You'll see an asterisk beside that fund amount because generally traffic officers, when they are dedicated to that use, fund themselves. And I know that that is an anthem for a lot of folks who don't like to receive a citation, but I will tell you, we have a lot of people that go through Rome, tens of thousands. And traffic enforcement would serve an ancillary use of, um, reducing the amount of crashes that we have, dealing with cut through traffic. There was a, someone I heard zipping through town today with their car. I know they were speeding down Main and it's a very loud vehicle. But, you know, these things that if we had a dedicated traffic enforcement, that would augment our patrol. Right now, one of the things that really worries me the most is that we have one police officer on shift at a time by themselves. And that's not really a safe configuration. Um, he would also like to request four additional patrol officers. However, our budget constraints as they currently stand, as we discuss general fund and the revenue streams, we can't fund four additional officers at the moment. So we've got to find somewhere that there is an incremental approach to that. Yes, sir.
So hypothetically, if you hired four, something, you got to buy four more squad cars?
Yes, sir. Yeah, I mean, there are ancillary costs to this that go along with this. So it's, it's not as simple as just the base pay for the police officer. It's, it's, you've got to outfit them, you've got to get them, um, uniforms, you've got to get a squad car, et cetera, et cetera. Yes.
So I know that we used to have a traffic control officer, maybe for a short period.
There was a part-time one, apparently approved, but is no longer funded.
Okay, that's what I was trying to figure out. Like, how much did, did, did that, is that going back, I get into the, the department, into the police?
Well, it doesn't go into the police budget in and of itself because all citations are collected through the municipal court. But remember I showed you general fund and how everything's rolled up? It generally is revenue neutral from the standpoint of if we put on a dedicated traffic officer, they generally offset their costs through citations, if you will.
Yeah, I, I was, I guess what I'm trying to figure out is if there were any, um, funds that were allocated to this particular traffic officer and now they're not. So I know we paid for, we paid for motor, we paid for equipment on this motor. Is that correct?
We only paid for a helmeted system and I believe we still have that. Do we not? It was for the, uh, about eighteen months ago, we paid for a system to, like a communication system from the bike to the helmet.
Yes, we still have that. We have a radio already for the motorcycle that we've got to be around right now.
We still have those items from the recent. Um, we were going to have a, um, reservist do traffic enforcement and we rented his bike for a dollar a year and then he, we paid for the, the helmet communication piece, but then he wasn't able to reserve for us. So we kept the materials, but we don't have a bike. We don't have an officer on, like, staff.
Okay.
Sorry, maybe that was a little around the bush to get to the answer that you needed.
I was trying to figure out, yeah, how to explain that.
Other questions on that one? So when you look at the traffic officer position, as I mentioned with the asterisk, that would be basically budget neutral. When you look at vehicle replacements, this is something that oddly enough, even though we recently purchased vehicles, they get used a lot. They're driven a lot and we need to start thinking about how we start rotating in, in a staggered mode so that we are replacing one or two of these every year instead of expending and buying four or five at once and then they all are used at the same time. We need a, a staggered approach to that so that we can continue to keep up with demand. Yes, sir.
You said the traffic officer was budget neutral. There again, does that cover his squad car?
Yes, sir. It does. When it's budget neutral, it is budget neutral. It covers the lease on the bike, any equipment, any training, any uniform, because that is simply all, that's what they're dedicated to is traffic enforcement. We also need to look at body camera replacement system. The current one that they use is extremely outdated and is less than beneficial in reporting the information that we need.
Didn't we allocate some ARPA funds to that?
Not for this, we did not.
Okay.
We ran out of funds beforehand. We went with the CAD system. We did use some of the monies that we received or, uh, had had from the building permit that was assessed for the new elementary school. We did use some of that for the CAD system, but not, not for this particular camera replacement. And what they did, Mr. Wobbs, they bought a DVD burner for some of those funds. That may be what you're recalling. There's also the question of certification pay for the officers. And if you have any questions about the deep dive information on this department, Chief Bocanelli is happy to answer those questions. Um, as I mentioned, four additional patrol officers would be instrumental to having two people on the street at a time. We just have not reached that funding capacity as of today. There's a uniform allowance increase that he is asking for, any expenditure increase and a vehicle maintenance increase. Those last three are based on just current staffing levels. That's, I had staff go back and rank these on priority order for which they would make that request, but we may not be able to fund one through five, just hypothetically, and we might be able to fund seven, eight, nine. So these are things that we'll look at as we go through the budget.
Now, is the uniform allowance increase, is that based on, is that because there's more officers that, that we have to?
You want to come up and sit where Mr. Schumach usually at? You can answer those questions.
Question was the uniform allowance, why I'm requesting the increase?
Yes.
Okay. Um, uniforms have obviously gotten a little more expensive, uh, and I've also been trying to upgrade the officer's equipment. Right now, they're issued, uh, point blank body armor. And with that, their exterior carrier for any kind of rifle rated protection, they have to throw on another vest over the top of it. So my skinny officer, Brandon Bowley, becomes about this wide when he's wearing everything. I'd like to upgrade it to a company called Angel Armor and it's a concealable vest with ceramic plates front and back. That would also, I've been investing a lot in proactive shooter situations for the guys because we have two schools in our city. And it'd be another Uvalde and it would also mitigate the amount of time to get ready. It's not stopping until you're over throwing another vest on. You're ready to go the minute you get out of your car. So that's, but it's a little more expensive. So that's what the uniform cost request is for.
We have the Angel Armor, so I know what you're talking about, but they don't fit on me, so I don't know. I don't know if your female officer is going to have a problem.
We, we were issued those in, in Richardson and that's where I first became familiar with them. And I mean, I know it's individual dependent. I know we have quite a few female officers and they wore them every day. But I know that, uh, officer require is rather petite, so it's a valid concern. We have a representative coming out Wednesday to kind of showcase this product for us, let all the guys see what I'm, I'm looking at. So that would be a valid question for me to ask on Wednesday.
That would be an excellent purchase for the, for the department too.
So just getting back to police department in and of itself, when we sat down together as a team and we started to look at needs for the coming year, these were the items for this department that were generated. Once they were generated, I asked each department head to rank them in priority order and that way we could present them to council so that as we are anticipating what to do with the budgets and what, if any, funds that we may have over and above the base level, what can we allocate it to? Any questions on PD that we have not addressed?
The Axon cameras?
Axon would be nice. Uh, Axon is, for us, it's cost prohibitive. Uh, their, their bid came in at over three hundred thousand dollars. So the company that we're looking at right now is a company called Utility. Uh, Boyd has gone to them, Decatur has gone to them. We've had a demonstration from them. A lot of the safety features they offer for the officers is well above what we have right now. Uh, it allows supervisors to live tap in, there's many of Axon's features. They can live tap into the car feed and the body camera feed. Um, it has a, I don't know what it's called, the feature where if the officer were to get shot, hit by a car, if he were in a prone position for more than thirty seconds, it sets off an officer distress alarm. Um, and it also, with our CAD system, I know where my guys' cars are at all the time, but I don't necessarily know where my officer is at if he's in a foot pursuit or something like that. It has GPS tracking in the camera, so I can also know where my officer is at any given moment. And it allows us to be in uniformity with the cities we get dispatched by and work most closely with.
It seemed to make a lot of sense to me, uh, Chief, because it's, with the fewer people as we have and you've got one guy on duty by himself. with the fewer people as we have and you've got one guy on duty by himself, this could be life and death.
So one of the things that I'll do as the budget continues to evolve over the next several weeks is we will narrow down this information and we will bring you ways that these things might be implementable. At current, we are still doing some research and we are still gathering some of the data that we need, but this gives you a thirty thousand foot level of the departmental needs in and of themselves and then we'll we'll keep uh getting more granular as we get closer to passage. Okay, so looking at the next uh would you like to go sit by Mr. Walthers and then we'll just have everyone at the table and
Yes, me.
We can have a conversation.
Just remember to turn your microphone off. Be best known, sir.
So when you look at the fire and EMS, uh one of the things that the chief has put together is, again, a ranking order of things that he would like to see as far as departmental priorities. And since you're at the microphone, Chief, I will let you go through these on your own.
Okay, uh the very first one is physical scans for all the staff. It's gonna be about eight grand uh per year. We're actually in a PA standard, we're supposed to have this done every year. Uh the first one is a comprehensive exam from head to toe. Uh the next year is not so much, so it'll get a little cheaper after the next two years. Uh now, if you are over the ages of forty-five and a hazmat tax, which uh there's only one person in the department that fits that role, just me. You really need one every year, uh a comprehensive exam every year. We're actually looking at uh if we can get this, maybe a Vias scan over at Los Clans. They go from head to toe for the very first one. They've caught several people even in their twenties uh that had cancer or tumors and they actually saved their lives because of it. So uh it's, it's a lot of radiation. I always tell the guys, I said, look at it, read it, see what you got. I gave them a website. All of them's like, no, if we can do it, this won't go on it. So we wanna know now if we have something. It's kinda scary too, on the other hand, to you know, maybe finding out what you do have that you don't even want to know about right now. So, but uh that's something that we've been putting off since I've been here and coming up on three years now, next year. So uh it would be well worth the money, I think, and it's something that needs to be done out of all these things. Uh the next one's Assistant Chief. Michelle, she is uh told me that October one, she was uh wants to step back and just kinda do pub ed and do the, the fun things that she likes to do, uh cause she's very busy with the job she has now and raising grandkids too at the same time. So I need somebody in that position, cause I won't be able to do it by myself, I promise. She, she means the, the world to this department. She does a lot for free and has done it free for probably sixteen years now. And not just the fire department. She's counsel, she was mayor, she was interim city manager. She did it all. She did everything uh for free the whole time. So uh I hate to see her go, but I also understand why she wants to go. I'm glad she wants to stick around with us and just be the pub ed that she loves doing, Santa sightings and and uh the Halloween and, and everything else that we do uh each year. Uh so that position there, what I'd like to do is promote one of our drivers into that position, so the cost wouldn't be so bad. It'd probably be about twenty, about twenty thousand fifteen, twenty thousand increase in their pay to bump them up to Assistant Chief. They, it shows eighty-five here and when they become Assistant Chiefs, they're gonna be like uh like me, they're gonna be on salary, so they won't get any overtime. Uh their holiday pay won't be extra on their check like it is for the ship people. So you'd have to pay them a little more than what you would to make up some of that difference, as your recent wife said, eighty-five thousand. Uh and that'll give a little discrepancy between Assistant Chief and Chief. Uh the ship captain, we have no rank construction on the fire department right now, other than everybody comes to meet the chief at top. And that's not the way a paramilitary organization uh should work, you know, it's you got your bottom, then you got your vex, then you got your next, and you got your next, to me. Uh we have, we don't have that on the fire department, so uh we really need ranking structure. We need to ship people to be able to answer, do somebody on shift that's there twenty-four seven. And then that person will go to the Assistant Chief, Assistant Chief. That person can't handle, will come to me and then I'll handle. Uh so we really need some ranking structure, especially for the future, to give them some hope of staying here and have someplace to go and not just stay as a firefighter the rest of your life. And right now they have no direction to them.
So Chief, on the ship captain, eventually you will have to have each shift will have to have a captain.
It will, but I just
You're starting out with the
Right now, it's like baby steps.
Yes.
And try to get one on there and then uh the other two would be drivers like we have. Uh cause drivers would step up to fill in a captain spot, you know, and then if Assistant Chief's gone for a amount of time, the captain could step up to be an Assistant Chief roles for a little while if needed. Uh we do have the weekend firefighter, uh since we'd have to replace the driver that goes up to Assistant Chief. So at the minimum, I, I would love to keep our weekend firefighter, cause a lot of our events are on the weekends, so we need that person and more calls are on the weekends. The weekend firefighter is a lot less, it's about sixty thousand or fifty, fifty something thousand base pay uh compared to what a shift firefighter is, about sixty to sixty-five thousand base pay. Cause they only work ninety-six hours in a day instead of one hundred and twenty. So I'll pay up LSA overtime or any of that stuff for making fire. Uh so we would if we did the promotions, we'd have to get somebody to take care of that spot that the driver came from. Uh promote somebody from firefighter to that driver spot to fill the second driver spot. I don't have to fill the driver's spot on the captain's spot, because that cap would fill both rows as a captain and a driver. And I'm, I'm trying to think, I know we we only have so much money in the bucket, I understand that. So trying to take baby steps of getting the structure planned out and hopefully two, three years from now, get a little more money, we can start adding to the captains like you. The three additional firefighters, uh uh that's, that's a hope, that's the thirty thousand that she's talking about fee. I've looked into safer grant board and they've changed that up, so it's seventy-five percent the first year, seventy-five percent the second year, and then thirty-five percent the third year, and after the third year, the city is in for it for a whole amount of money. So it's not like it was. It used to be five years, where they hit a hundred, a hundred seventy-five, so on and so forth. So it gave you more years to collect money. They don't do that now. And uh right now, we don't even know if they're gonna actually give us a grant because of the whole of our grants, you got, that was no. So that's not a given. And everybody I've talked to that's got a safer grant, you have to have a minimum of three firefighters per shift in order to even think about getting a safer grant, cause they wanna see that you're making the effort to get full staffing, which is four percent. And so
We're in there yet.
Yeah, you can go out and pay, you know, ten grand, twelve grand to get a safer grant, but you're not gonna get it unless we get at least three on the ships to get. And then that's probably, I'd say, two years down the road, looking positive on it, you know, two years down the road, we go for it, we get it, and then you can feel that, because then you won't have to pay for it for another two years, except for the twenty-five percent for two years. But then of course the third year, sixty-five percent, who knows what it's gonna be three years from now, it's gonna change down the road. Uh bay doors, we have rollers falling off, actually one fell off on one of the vehicles the other day. The wind, the rain, the snow, everything comes through it. It, it's bad enough, cause the floor's flat, but sinking, because it's a bay floor, we have a lot of heavy weight on there, so the floor is actually sinking in the bay. So all the water stands in the bay and doesn't go out. There's no drains. It goes into the office folds up the walls and stuff, so uh it's gotta be fixed, the bay doors, and it's gonna be we put fifteen thousand on there, it's gonna be somewhere between ten and thirteen thousand, depending on what we do. Uh we got one door that door doesn't even work, we have to pull the chain and then lift it up ourselves when we get a call for a red truck.
So this for all the doors?
Yes, yes. The fifteen would be for all the doors to get them replaced, not replaced, but refurbished or mostly.
Yeah, it's, it's it's just bringing them up to a little bit better standard. It's not replacing and making them uh kinda more what's industry specific at the moment. Those are six figures investments and we really don't want to do that until we know what's happening. Facility wise, it doesn't make sense to um continue to we don't wanna put the top of the line on or even middle of the line on what we have now until we know what direction we're gonna take with actual fire station, because to Chief's point, uh it is sinking the floor considerably. There's about a three inch drop in the middle bay that I don't know how many of you may or may not have noticed that the truck push in, but that's it's becoming an issue. And so in the next couple of years, we're gonna have to determine what's gonna happen with the old school and what are we gonna do by extension with this retirement of the complex, because you will recall when we talked about putting the modular building out front, the whole idea was that it was a temporary measure. It was not that this was going to be um city hall for the next twenty years. That building is absolutely meant to be taken apart and used for some other purpose on behalf of the city. So whatever we do, it needs to be with an eye towards making either this piece of property kind of community center where it can be used by everyone and then determine if putting public safety somewhere else is appropriate, or if we're going to keep it here, how are we going to address their needs as the years go on?
And, and the doors, they still don't have the safety features on them. If somebody walks on it and it's coming down, uh it's just gonna come down, that's not gonna go back down. So that's part of that fifteen thousand. Certification pay, the last one on the, the item is certification pay for paramedics. Currently got two, we have two in class right now that's going. They're having to pay for it themselves, which is anywhere between three thousand and eight thousand dollars that they pay out of their pocket to become a medic. For those of you, I mean, sure you all know, but for the most part, uh it's E M R, which is emergency medical responder, and there's E M T basic, and there's E M T paramedic. Uh paramedics, the highest level that you can get, that's why we have an ALS unit here, trying to get more medics. But their responsibility is tenfold of what E M T is. So they get to, you know, they push drugs, they shock. Their responsibility is, is so much more than just E M T, but they're still getting paid the same pay as an E M T basic.
So are you wanting this fund to pay for their school and possibly increase their salary?
No, this is just for, since they're already in it, this is just for certification pay. So I have four, actually I've got five counted myself, but I might count myself into the certification pay. Just counting the four that we have, or two is in class, the two we have. We also have a part-time uh person that's paramedic. Uh so this would give them three thousand dollars a year, just to kinda start out with. Which is two hundred and fifty dollars a month on their paycheck. So that's what the certification question.
It's a good retention tool. Keep the good people, we're already training.
Well, the fact that they're having to go through paramedic school, I think that that lends itself to being paid a little bit higher also.
It's also a great investment for Rome. If you think about how far we are from any close hospital and if you have somebody roll up on scene that is an E M T basic or this other designation that Chief talked about, I'd much prefer a paramedic who could do something rather than wait. And that's a great service to the residents of Rome as well.
Older I get, the more important it becomes.
But that, that also in the, the school, if you know E M T, they go online, get it in about three months. A paramedic takes they go from twelve months, if you go online to eighteen months if you get a degree, so that's a lot more, a lot more CDs. I bet that's something that really needs to be pushed forward to more months than that.
Any questions on fire and EMS services? This is not an exhaustive list, mind you, this is just current high priorities. Yes, sir?
So on the garage doors, uh Mr. High asking questions, making sure I understood it. The fifteen thousand is for all the safety stuff and for all three doors.
Well, there's, yeah, there's uh three, what am I saying, six doors.
So that covers all the doors, safeties, hedges, labor.
That's to refurbish them, uh to get them going, not new doors, but refurbished, correct, we have, and get one new door, garage door opener, cause those openers, I tried to look online. I was gonna do it myself, but really expensive. I can't leave out expensive openers. That door opens are compared to a residential. And that's also putting seals on the bottom to try to keep the water from flowing underneath and fill it up later.
Okay, so then looking at slide deck number twenty-one, we're going to talk briefly about administration, because this will be kind of the end of general fund. From the standpoint of, well, and goodness gracious. Wonderful presentations.
Uh just think about it.
You're good. I'm getting onto that, thank you. Um we have talked with the mayor about the concept of putting code enforcement in here as an option for our community. I have actually talked to an existing staff member that we have that is currently serving as our utility billing and permit manager. And it would be my recommendation that we create what's called a community services manager position, where they would handle utility billing and permitting, and they would oversee code enforcement and we would elevate them to a department head level position, put them on salary, and then hire a utility billing clerk. They could backfill their role. Right now, you have a very underutilized, underutilized resource in Ms. Rutherford. She knows this community forward and backwards and ninety-eight percent of the people that live in it. And if we created this type of a position where she could step away from some of the day-to-day roles of actually just the physical running of the payments, the answering of the phone, the processing of the more routine tasks, and you used her knowledge and skill base to handle code enforcement, we can send her to training and she can start to do some of this enforcement throughout the community as a portion of her position. Now, she can't take that on with what she's doing now. But if we move her into this hybrid role, she could help with uh permits from the standpoint of what's coming in the door for development and planning and uh other things and work closely with Brooke and I on that. But she would need to give some of those routine tasks to the utility billing clerk and the administrative assistant that's in the front. And my goal would be for her to oversee those positions and allow a, a job category, if you will, that's paid at a different rate. Right now, we are uh paying a whole lot of money to somebody, well, she's not a whole lot, we're paying good money to someone who is um answering the phone and taking window payments. And while that's not a bad thing, it, we evolved past that at this point. And we need somebody who can actually do the code enforcement, who knows the ordinances, who has worked with our inspector and I think she'd do an excellent job at that. So that would be my recommendation to you all. The nice thing about this is the move in general fund is about sixteen thousand dollars. Most of this will be funded out of utility fund, because Julie's current position is an eighty-twenty split in utility fund. It would still remain an eighty-twenty split, because she still would be overseeing the billing, um permitting, et cetera. The new utility billing clerk that came in would be about forty-five thousand dollars and that would all come out of the utility fund. So blessedly, that would give us um this opportunity to make this change within personnel, would get us a service level expansion, but it is split amongst two funds that we have, where the bulk of it is gonna, it will come out of utility fund instead of out of general fund.
You said that the community services manager position would be an increase in salary? She's, okay.
Because you're, you're, you're changing the complexity level of the job and you're putting a greater level of responsibility for code enforcement and other things in that position.
I understand and I totally agree. I just, I just wanted to clarify for everyone.
Yeah.
But it's becoming salary and currently she didn't know.
I were in the correct. I would, I would want for her to oversee the utility billing clerk that was hired in the front and the administrative assistant position that's in the front, because right now, that administrative assistant is really doing a tremendous amount of support for utility billing and taking said water payments and helping with the phone. They're also helping to support Jesus. I don't know if you recall, last year, we talked about hiring an administrative assistant specifically for utility fund. We put that on hold until we got moved. We wanted to make sure that we didn't have any capacity existing anywhere, that we had a true need for that before we expended the funds. And so right now, the person who's the admin assistant that is coming out of general fund is helping to support the things that Jesus needs as well.
So is that a different budget or a different fund from the place of the fire or all, all those are the same?
Well, that's where it gets a little complicated, Mr. Johnson. So the police is folded up under general fund already. The fire department has its own separate fund. However, you will see when we get to the line item portion of your budget that the general fund sends money to the fire department each year so that they have enough money to pay all of their bills. I think that was done, I think it's all separate, because back when it was a, an early department and it was volunteer, when you had someone in the community who was kinda When you had someone in the community who was kind of spearheading that project, they'd go to one of our local banks, and they'd open a bank account. And that department or that service delivery would oversee it. When I came in. Uh, my predecessor had taken what was at one time twenty-seven different bank accounts that the city had. And consolidated it down into consolidated cash and got it more streamlined and more into governmental practices. So we are down now to general fund and utility fund, but out of general funds, you also have fire and parks. And so we do send about three quarters of a million dollars each year to the fire department out of general fund. So it's kind of an intermingling of those, if you will. Does that make sense?
It does, but I guess my question was. I understand we need code. But on the flip side, I think the police and fire department kind of takes precedence over that. And that's what I'm trying to figure out what the money's coming.
So police and fire are general fund, the utility billing, uh clerk and the community services manager is. Almost entirely in utility fund. It's in a separate bucket.
She said eighty percent comes from utility.
Yeah, so it's about a sixteen thousand dollar difference in general fund, is the impact to general fund if you make the change. The rest of it comes out of the, the water and sewer account.
Okay.
Makes sense? Anybody have any questions about this particular idea? Okay, so then looking at utility budget priorities, uh this is also something that the mayor and I discussed at a very high level with Mr. Dominguez. You'll see on slide deck number twenty-two, this comes no surprise to you that we have completion of the current bomb projects. That is number one on the list. We talked about a second elevated tank. We need to rehab our current and existing water tanks. We need to look at an update to our fee and our charge schedules as it relates to meter sizes. You will recall that we did make a change not that many months ago, where we took away. Uh, we, we dealt with the free water that was being given within the billing document. At some point, we're going to have to deal with that on the sewer side, because it still exists there. And then we're going to have to talk about the rate structure, but we do not want to do this all at once. We want to do that incrementally. There's a street inventory and repair plan that we really need to create and figure out how we are going to deal with those. There are generators that need to be integrated into our system that are required according to an emergency operations plan that we don't have. And we need to deal with access at the Bobo plant. Uh, down off that particular roadway, it is your life to get in and out of that area, that they don't have any type of road base or the. The fence set back enough where they can actually safely get off the road and get in and out of that area. So those are kind of the. The big to-do items for this current fiscal year out of utility fund. And then I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Dominguez to talk about slide twenty-three and twenty-four. As he has a, a, a little bit larger list than some of the other departments with some numbers beside it. So, Mr. Dominguez, it's off to you, sir.
Thank you. Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council. So I guess we'll start on the, on slide twenty-three on, uh. Number one, so um recently we had to dig across the street when we put the new city hall, and we had to dig a hole for a sewer line that was. I don't know, I'd say seventeen foot, no, it was deeper than seventeen foot. It was probably closer to twenty. Um, but we had no safety equipment that we own, and we borrowed a little. I guess a safe box is what you'd call in, and uh City of Alworth lives borrowing, we're, you know, grateful they did, um. But as we keep going along, the new water lining that was put in, it's every bit of ten foot minimum. And safety is a big concern. Ten foot deep. Yeah, so, uh. I guess my, my biggest thing is I want my guys to go home with every digit, every limb alive every day. It's just like anybody else, any department, you know, safety first, and I think it'd be a, a. Very inexpensive uh expense versus paying for somebody's life. Um, so that's the first one. Number two is uh general supplies. We are. We're in need of tools from. Left to right, doesn't matter if it's water or sewer, we're missing pumps, we're missing uh more battery-powered tools, um. More tree trimming things, just general supplies, um. And that's just one of the biggest things. I want to make sure my guys have the right equipment instead of driving back and forth. We've done great on getting things, but we still need to. Get a little more to get us where we need to be. Uh, number three is going to be tough pad computers. It's a waterproof computer. I've been giving my guys emails. And we want to integrate to a, a work order system where there's records. Uh, the reason is, is when the state comes through and does an audit, they request any complaints that happen, uh whether it's water pressure, sewer backups. Whatever the case is, and I do give those now, but it's easier and better. I can directly respond to my, to my employees, and they respond back, and there's a record of it throughout the whole time. So paper trail is going to be a, a key one there, and I think those tough pads would be a good investment. Uh, number four, skid steer. So we, we bought a skid steer this last year and. There are attachments that we could uh invest in and, and get that would help. We have a lot of rock in Rome. I know that's a big thing, and it's hard to clean up properties. Uh, we still do a good job with what we got, but. A rock bucket would be good, a grapple. So if there's ever an emergency where, I don't know, a tree falls on the road. Uh, the grapple bucket is a hydraulic bucket that'll grab it, pick it up, and, you know, remove it, move it to the side, or do what we gotta do to get it out of there. And then there's also a, a auger to dig holes for street signs, um. Whatever kind of hole there is. We don't have, we have a whole little Ford tractor right now, and somebody has to get on the back end of the tractor with the rock bar and pry down. To get down, but you only get down like, how about two foot, and then you hit pure rock. So that's a big problem. Um, but there's a lot of attachments we could get, and, and uh twenty-eight thousand for the most part will get quite a bit. Um, the reason, there's two additional trucks. We currently, we did receive three. Uh, of the twenty-twenty-four F T fifties, and we still have two trucks that are uh older. Twenty thirteen and twenty eighteen. One has a slip in transmission, the other one. I, I hope it makes it. It's uh, it's, it's been rough. It's been here for, I think since Chris started, before Chris started. And uh it, it's gonna need, it's gonna be time to change it out soon. I mean, that's just how it goes. And we're short a truck, so I have. Employees are riding together as of right now, and, and until we get bigger in departments, then we can kind of have people riding together, but. There are times I can separate the guys to do five different jobs. I mean, that's the best way to do things is if we can knock out five things at once, you know, the day goes by easier. Yes, there's times they work together all day, and there's times they don't. And I think separating them would be good, and one additional truck would, would really be key. Um, a Kubota excavator. So this one is, uh. Just, I guess, the part that digs. There's nothing else to it, and it has a blade to fix up properties. If we get a trench box. I think I can make it work with the skid steer, but because of the weight of how the, how the boxes are. Uh, excavator would be key to pick them up. So you pick it up on two ends, move it on, and slide it down in the hole.
So that's literally a box that goes in a trench. Okay.
Huge box, yes. Yeah, so it's like from here to Mr. Loftus, maybe a little bit shorter, and then it expands the width. But it's going to be ten foot tall, so taller than the seal in here. But that'll cover our, our. Major portions of the lower parts where the walls cave in, and the rest up in the ground, I can kind of shave it off to where that's not a danger.
I was picturing a box with.
And then, um, so for seven, I have water, sewer, locator and camera. Um, as y'all know, we, we have clay tile lines and we're doing a big replacement, but. At the end of the day, there's still going to be lines, uh, for, for example, the east plant, there's still issues over there. That we'll get into more of that later on, but help identify, so when we have problems and somebody calls. The only thing we can do is run our sewer main, and that's all we can do. We don't have sewer camera to exactly tell what the problem is. As long as the water flows flowing in the big line, the city's good and the customer. They're just, they gotta call plumber and have them come and camera. So on the camera side, we can put it in the line. And we can verify that nothing's coming out of the customer's side. Then they know a hundred percent that they have an issue on their side. And then the last two is uh the carport uh for the backhoe. So the backhoe is back in the water tower. And it really needs to be in the cover separately. We've talked about it a couple of times and uh. That's just, it just needs to be in a separate building to kind of conserve it and prevent somebody from running into something at the water tower. Cause that's pretty expensive there. And certification pay, um. My guys currently have uh water and sewer licenses, and I would like for them to further their, their. Potential of getting a bigger license. I mean, nothing stops them. They got the experience. But I don't think there's an incentive for them to go, so I think this would help them. Go for something bigger and, and when it benefits us, it covers us on the state side and, and it'd be a little bit more money for, for them to go for that. And then we got the. Number ten, uh medical hip, hip shots. So we used to do this a long time ago, but I don't recall. Why it stopped or anything, but working around sewer, that's just part of, you get a cut and hip shots. That's gonna be a, a big deal, um so that, that would be very interesting to get, especially for all the guys, um. Covers for the tonx boxes back here in the back. We had first talked about it, and it was a little more pressure than we were thinking. Um, that would help put some cover for the police vehicles. And even for uh some of the public works uh equipment, and possibly even fire too, uh so that'd be something kind of for all the departments.
Just to give you a visual, we've got two tonx boxes set side by side, and basically we're going to roof on the part that's in between them. So that they could park, they could park uh four cars. On, under each cover or uh the skid store or the backhoe. Well, not the backhoe, it's a little taller than that, but. Um, you could also park the mowers and other things under there. Uh, that would give it some protection from filing another T M L claim and having to deal with hail damage and other things of that nature.
Make the equipment last a lot longer.
And then we got a generator maintenance, so we have one, two, three generators just for the sewer plants. We still gotta get some for the water, but on the sewer plant side, there was a generator that hadn't had an oil change in twelve years. So that is.
Good oil.
Yeah, that's, so yeah, uh, that is a huge factor in, in uh something we need to invest in, and it's. I mean, it's just, it's gonna save us a lot of money. Uh, meter calibration, that's a new one. So we have to calibrate our meters and. Prices have gone up, so I have put this on here as a bigger, we have more meters now because of R V R. And then on top of that, uh, just costs have gone up. And then blower maintenance, same deal. Uh, oil changes, they were, whenever something would break, that's when they would change something. So you just run it till it breaks. I was like, well, that's not very ideal. So I put that on there. And then, uh. For the general fund, we put on here the hot box machine that was a, that's a machine we talked about that. We could run a Chico and get some hot mix or some asphalt. And then now that we have a skid steer, we'd cut up a part of the room that's alligator and cracking dip or something. And we'd actually bring that hot box, put a good foundation on the bottom, concrete or, or uh road base, whatever it needs. Tamper it down, and then you put your mix on top, and that would at least be something to start to. Our deteriorating, deteriorating roads, because we have a big problem on our roads. And I think it needs major attention. I put on there fifty thousand dollars for supplies additionally. That would be every year, but it would be a start to something.
I have a question about the vaccine for fire. Do, do y'all get vaccinated at all? I mean, would that be something that y'all?
Back, uh, back in the earlier days of my career, we got the hip shots, but uh I don't hear of any part of getting vaccinated.
So that's pretty much a comprehensive overview of the questions and the things that staff had brought forward as potential. Service expansions for the city. I will say that I don't find any of their requests to be on a want list. It's more of on a needs list. We are not the size of a city where we have an extraordinary amount of fluff in our budget that we could cut. And or move from one line item to the other. All of the departments are pretty lean and basically pay for their very, very basics that they need. Now, we have made tremendous progress in the last three years. But I will continue to urge council to look at ways that we can reinvest in the community and make sure that we're providing the services that people want. Public safety is one of those, as well as public works. We don't see a large request coming out of administration or for hefty events or for us to create. Uh, you know, Parks Department, we're offering yoga. You don't see these things in Rome at this point, because we are not at that. We're not at that level of development as a community at the moment, and we know that that is not where our money is best used. Nothing that has been put forward by a department head for a request by council. Is out of the norm of traditional standard business operations and or designed to make the community safer in some form or fashion. We also know as a team that we do not have funding to fund all of these. That is just the reality that we live with today in Rome. So.
How much money do we have?
That's a good question. And so we're still working with our financial team. This is meant to just be kind of, as I said, the thirty thousand foot level. At your next meeting, I will have some additional uh information. You will see, just if we can quickly talk about this, these pages that I've put before you. These are your line item budgets, and I know that. You have kind of your overview. This is your granular number by each particular department, by each particular line. You will see on, on, just on your face page, if you look at line three and four. I have the property tax that relates to the operations and the debt highlighted in yellow, because I don't know what those are going to be for the coming year. I don't anticipate that the line three for the operations is going to change much unless there is some sort of change in the tax rate. I was very disappointed last year to realize that by adopting the voter approval rate, and which is supposed to give you a three and a half percent increase in your. Revenue from year to year, it netted us about twenty-four thousand dollars. That doesn't pay for a third of an officer. So you'll recall that we did put money in the budget for streets and other things and put it in the. Put it out there to the voters, and we had a petition filed, and it was rolled back. So unless something changes, unless we have some other diversification in our revenue, revenue stream, our sales and use tax. Goes up tremendously, which I am very hesitant to rely uh on sales and use tax because it's volatile. Then we have to be conservative in that approach to what we add in and what may or may not be available. And so I have cautioned staff that these ongoing costs for people is our greatest. Cost, but it's also where we get the most service delivered from Rome. So we're going to have to make that decision of where do we set the tax rate and what does the community want to support? Because. I don't know how else. I don't know what other format to put it in to be as transparent as possible. There's just not extra money sitting around in Rome that I can say, okay, we don't need this program. This is not something the community values, and we do want it over here. This is a very basic service delivery. So as we continue to firm those up, for instance, when I looked at the. Twenty-three, twenty-four budget numbers, and we are finishing up getting our stuff out for audit for the twenty-four fiscal year. Um, we expect to have a surplus in general fund. We had for the twenty-three fiscal year, we had a several hundred thousand dollar surplus in general fund. So we do have money in our bank accounts. It's just what do we want to spend it on? And I hesitate to recommend to you all allocating one-time funds or. The savings monies for ongoing costs for personnel, because there. If something doesn't change in those intervening years, at some point, I'm going to have to reduce staff, because we won't have the funds from which to pay for it. So we're trying to be as balanced and judicious as possible in the things that we bring forward, but. We don't want you to think that we have everything that we could possibly need from which to serve the community. We are not there yet. I expect more details for you at your next meeting.
Well, back, back to the truck, you said transmission was slipping. What condition is the truck?
So that truck is, uh, that one's gonna be our newer one. It's gonna be a two thousand and eighteen Chevy little fifteen hundred. And uh it still runs, you can just drive, and when you put it in drive, it'll skip to reverse or neutral. And then you gotta do it again, and it's, it's not terrible, but every, at least once a week, it starts doing it, but it's. But it's still running and, I mean, it, it'll get us where we need to be. Yeah, well, that, that's the other thing is, they're small trucks. You can't pull trailers with them. I mean, we have the big trailers we bought. I don't even think those trucks can haul a trailer by itself because of the weight. And, uh, I don't wanna do that because it's gonna further hurt the transmission. So honestly, that's the only truck I would recommend phasing out. But the other one's still three-quarter ton. It's older, but it doesn't have as many problems. Uh, it doesn't have check engine light on. Oil's always been changed. The mileage is, uh, I'll say like seventy thousand, so it's still, it'll, it'll run for a little while, for a good while. But at some point, the, the reality is, it's, I don't know how long the engine's gonna last for transmission.
So the transmission, you said it's slipping. It's from the description you just gave, it's not slipping, it's just not going into the proper gear.
Well, well, it slows down too. Like, you'll be going, and then it, it's like it's, you know, when you're going on a thirty, and then it just, you gasp, you're, you're hitting the gas, but it's going down the, the speedometer. So it's like losing, but it doesn't do it all the time.
So engine-wise?
Uh, the engine. Yeah, yeah, it's still good. The engine's good. The, the frame's good on that one. Um, it's only been in, yeah, the transmission's gonna be the only thing. But again, it's, it's a small engine truck, though. It's like, it's not a, a half ton or, or a three-quarter ton to haul the trailer. So is it worth fixing and selling and trying to get a good chunk of money out of it? Those other trucks went for quite a bit. Uh, the two thousand three dollars sold for thirteen thousand dollars. I thought it was gonna sell for a thousand bucks. That was the, yeah, bottom. So, I mean, there's options out there. We just gotta figure out if we wanna just keep it and, and run with it as long as we can or what exactly we do with that.
And that's why, I'm sorry, Mr. Johnson, that's why you see TBD on your form for this because it's to be determined. We have some additional research that we need to do to bring forward a rotation plan for council to, to consider. One of the other things we've got to get in place and get a policy on is our vehicle replacements. We don't quite have that yet. Just to, case in point, when you look at Chief Bocanelli's truck, it often dies as it's going down the road. It just dies. And he has to coast to the side and start again. Sometimes it starts, sometimes it doesn't. When Chief DeWes was here, he had the same problem with the truck, and he took it in multiple times for work in.
Fifteen, sixteen years.
The ocean really couldn't do anything about it or isolated or however. They said they fixed it and it came back and we had the same problem. So that, that particular component of your budget, we will bring back at your subsequent meetings. It's okay, this is what we found out. We've got it checked. This is what's wrong. This is the estimated cost from which to fix it. Is it worthwhile or is it not? We'll make a recommendation to you. Uh, we're just not quite, we don't have all those facts yet.
But we're still gonna have.
The circle I'm trying to work back to, you're saying it's a fifteen hundred. Oh, that's, that's fine. I won't pull your equipment. But you're saying you need a code enforcer. Is it worth putting three thousand dollars into the transmission and letting the code enforcer drive? That's what I'm getting at.
It's possible. That's not something that we would take off the table. Um, if it is fixable and it's a minimal cost, yeah, you would definitely wanna err on the side of caution and keep it and use it for something else. I've worked for cities where it's not been unusual that, especially for trucks for that type of a use, you bought a used one and you did the best you could with it until something else came along. We, we don't have to rush out and buy a brand new under any means. But that's where we've got to do a little more analysis before I can bring you back some hard information that you all can make a decision from.
I'm, I was just looking at the overall picture.
That makes sense? Any other questions? Just briefly, when you take your base budget home, you will see there are several, probably about a half a dozen, maybe a dozen line items that are highlighted in yellow because we are still doing some research on those. Uh, I will bring forward, you will recall that in my first year here, I did a pay scale analysis for all of our positions, and that gives you kind of a, um, a minimum, a midpoint, and a maximum amount for each job. And we are still using that pay scale to determine, are we within industry standards? How far below are we based on each particular position? And, and there are some that are at the midpoint. There are some that I think we should reevaluate that positions, pay scale, just on some changes from when I came in the door versus things that they're doing now. We will bring that information to you at your next meeting in July, and we'll have some more numbers as it relates to that. Because one of the things that we talked about as a team was that we most definitely need to continue to provide the services that we're providing now. We need to take care of the people that are currently here on behalf of Rome, and we need to, um, we're all work together. We don't sit in a room and we don't say, okay, chief, I'm gonna fight you for that fifty dollars that's gonna go in your budget. That, that is not something that we do as a group. We sit around and we talk about the needs that Bocanelli has and that Estes has and that Dominguez has and what Julie may need or what might come for city secretary. And we all work together to determine what is best for Rome and bring that to council for you all to make the decision. So as I said, this is an iterative process. This is not your first view of the budget. We'll talk about it again at your next meeting, both your meetings in August, so that you are ready and prepared for the tax rate conversation and for the, uh, actual passage of the budget and adoption of the rates. So I'm happy to answer any other questions you have, but this is kind of the thirty thousand foot view for first pass.
It's something you can go by. So when you start getting in the lead, I was wanting to give you the one over the world, you first.
Any questions?
Just a weak bit.
Well, that's all I have, Mayor.
Anything else? Anybody got anybody?
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
I'll say anything.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye.